April. I want to call this April sixteen point forty-four meeting, the border aid. And to the Republic for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What happened was. The lady that was here on my personal property retired. And actually, some of these slipped through cracks. Then it was gone. And what we did is you go on the personal property, you just get a tax ticket, like do not collect. So when the tax office gives, like publish your stuff in the newspaper, they said, and we got a bunch of these. So that's. Several months worth of stuff. And you get those, you know, those, those person. That's somebody else. See.
I'll make a motion to approve the refund presented this morning by.
Second, on favor.
To approve the exoneration as presented.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
For me, we don't have a payroll. I can't see. All right.
Patrick, Ruth, do you have any questions or information?
No. But I do want to point out that the one for. The gas station. That is from November twenty-two. Through December. So that's a very, very danger. And. If they can't. More timely than I'll think in just be going to get gas. Because that's the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And then it's half year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Let's just send them a letter. What, why don't you have somebody drop the letter and put the deadlines for, you kind of know when you want it? And then we'll put it on next week.
I think we should, or the police, that's what I.
Yeah. Quarterly at work.
I think it should be.
We don't want to put too much of burden on. Quarterly is reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Minister. Okay, we've had several special meet, regular meetings, so minutes for. Three, two, at nine o'clock, eleven o'clock, one o'clock, and three o'clock. And then on four, five, for the emergency meeting and the special meeting. So a total of six minutes to be submitted for approval.
Is that your motion to approve?
Yes.
You have four meetings on the second?
Yes.
That what you're saying?
Correct.
In the morning, twenty, twenty.
All the workshops.
Yeah.
First. On favor.
Aye.
State settlements. I'll approve those, I mean, we approve the state settlements.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
All right, so you're. You have to approve the levy, and then we revise the uncollectible down to seven and a half. At the owner's suggestion. So that's basically you decide on the budget, that it was changing from mine was I want that.
What does that mean? What are the?
You guess, not going. It increases revenue, so you renew some things. So you know.
I'm moved that we approved and laid the levy.
Second, on favor.
I also knew that we approved the provision.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
So here should never be government, they did go out of the back. Because the money is ours.
Eleven thousand?
Yeah, eleven thousand.
Making that less.
I already have.
I knew that we approved the seventy-four removals, renewal.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
And then Ray Bar and our little group. This is for your. Project grant consultant.
I wanted to add that the L R A has an economic project grant consultant. I want to add the commission having one also, and we're handing it to the L R A.
Do we have a proposal of the scope of work and that sort?
It's actually the same thing we've been doing with more duty, it's just he wants to continue starting that early round trail. And work with like the landowners and the company and the state property owners.
Is it only recreational oriented, or is it economic development in general?
I think it's all of them. I think.
Region. Does water. So we can still reutilize region four for the water. Unfortunately, no, but such sewer, so.
What's the term of it? A year, year. You're like. Maybe we approve it.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Well, next to your. Ground feeling projects. They have said to bring back, so like their structural analysis.
So he said that he's thought, Matt said, that he has been in touch with two. Structural engineer consultants, and they gave costs on visual, so just coming and going around and doing structural engineering reports. For the jail, for the memorial building if we want, and those other projects that we need to do them on for the REAP demo grants. But he has not gotten back to him with their numbers on actually coming in and doing like. Loan bearing, which we definitely need for the jail. He just hasn't gotten those numbers back from those two yet, and he's also trying to find a third consultant because Brownfields really prefers that we have three quotes. So that's still kind of a work in progress, but the cost on the visual structural engineer reports is three to five thousand dollars. And one of these companies did do one for the jail, not the jail, I'm sorry, the sheriff's department, and it was about twenty-five hundred, so that falls in line with what we're used to, but I'm not sure how much the. Do you remember how much the structural engineering was that they did for the circuit clerk?
I think it's about the same.
Okay.
Around two thousand.
Okay, just being additional that much to do that, that extra part of the report.
So you need us to approve that now?
Yeah, so we can get moving on that, Brownfield wants us to.
All of the Brownfields. Okay, I move that we approve those expenses.
Okay.
On favor.
Um, we also have Rainell landfill that he wanted to spend forty thousand on, and that was kind of a drop in the bucket. Get going, show that, and it's ready to go, it's a phase three, actually, to show Brownfield that we're spending some.
And that's the parking lot, correct?
Yes, that, that kind of ties in with our recreation and economic as well.
I mean, we approve that as well.
Thank you.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Then. You guys have talked a while back about getting this building over here prayed.
Jail?
No.
Jamie.
Jamie. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
To see compared to what he's asking for.
Yeah.
Remember what we put in the freezer? What that's under a thousand dollars worth?
No, it's under five, don't you do that.
I think, I think between two and three thousand dollars. You want to get a bid on it first?
It's under. I could get three different things or.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go, that makes it go there.
Well, I was thinking of home appraisals versus.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, as long as it's competitive. Last time I found it, but. I don't think we need to. Bid it out, that's.
Okay, okay, I would just, I thought that's your question.
I was just.
Okay.
I thought you were saying, do we want to bid? Pulling first, that's what my face was.
Okay. Go ahead. Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
And then there's additional equipment for a fifth station at the nine one one center, but they claim this one.
Tanja.
I'm here.
Okay. You want to tell us about the additional equipment for the fifth station?
Well, we, we got a quote from Pete Marado on that, which is an old quote, we got back with him and we're requesting a new one on that, but we just haven't got it yet, but. Anyway, we have everything on that fifth station except for. Uh, radio console. We already have CAD, already have CAD, and all that, we just need radio. So that's what this was for.
Any other questions?
We emailed him again yesterday, too.
Yeah, and he got back with me saying that he's checking with the pricing team that what he sent was wrong. And they're working on that now to get us a new, so the, the cost you're seeing there, it shouldn't be that much, it'll be different.
Yeah, he even agreed that it was a little steep.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's. Hey, Philip, Tanja, you guys want to elaborate on how you're going to use this system and? How it actually helped during. On April the second event?
Well, what we run into there, which is again, is the whole reason behind this. We created that fifth station, not only as a training station, but also a spillover for excessive calls during. You know, just like what we went through on the second. And like I said, we have all the tools there to make that happen other than the radio, and. Of course, we found out during all this, it would have been incredible to have that radio there. So, and we actually looked at doing this last budget, but we got sidetracked on. Another type of. Connect, like a remote type console. But then again, we got back with Peter and said, we need to readjust our sites here and look back to. We really need a permanent console to make a permanent fifth position. So that's why we're at where we're, what we're doing today.
The one he was trying to sell us was a mobile one, and it, it cost even more.
I make a motion to, if the other commissioners don't have any question.
Just which, which? What question?
It comes out of nine one one.
We want to do it out of nine one one or out of Arca?
Well, I mean, Arca might not be that, I think it might be pretty good, yeah, you ever thought about that? I mean, I, I can go, it's fine with me.
So, motion is to fund it out of Arca? Second.
Second, okay, on favor.
Aye. It's nine fifteen.
Yep, need to go to.
But it doesn't take long.
Sure, I have.
Well, you have copies of them, but they're budgeted. I'm a technology.
Yeah.
Survey does have one.
Yes.
Um, so today I'm presenting this budget for the fire department, the fire department. The total we're requesting is three hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. And do you want me to go down each line item? Or how?
I went down it, I mean, that's up to the mission.
Not necessary, okay, so do you have, do I have questions on anything?
As it were, no, I don't have any questions.
I didn't. This is all. This is all totally out of fire levy. I didn't account for the city. Putting any money in this part, this is, this does reflect any of the city money. Which we don't put anything in anyway, other than the fire calls right now, so that's what I'm asking to come out of fire levy. Okay, but the city, what does the city tend to contribute to the fire? Well, it was fire calls and like, and we do all their, all the accounting, all the, you know, we pay all their bills, we keep their books. That's mostly our contribution. Because. Yes, the paper call. What's that normally amount to? That hundred and. Over, it should be right around a hundred fifty thousand.
That's on the first time, salary and wages.
I'll have to pull up my electronic copy. Do you want to? Paper. We're trying to save paper and then backfire on us. We try the same thing, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I think it's working right now. For the old guy to be able to do this, you know, it's worth.
And we've just have, you know, our citizens are already paying a higher tax rate, they pay into the levy. So. That's why we have stopped paying anything for the fire department, other than those fire calls, because. We thought that it couldn't come out of the levy, but then you all have clarified that it can. So.
Yeah, so this is what I think commissioners, this is a total of fire budget that you're presenting. That's not. Not counting the state, you're not allocating state money in this or anything.
No.
Just the total of what.
Our state money, we have always held for. Equipment parts, usually truck purchases.
Apparently, we use that in addition to. The engine replacement program that's been through levy. We paid a difference with that state insurance funding, that's primarily what we saved that for is engine replacements.
What's the?
And then we don't have to fund it, I mean, we don't have to find it.
So the city is not financed in any of this fire budget.
Right. Other, I mean, we pay the insurance on the building, maintenance on the building, and like I said, the accounting services and all that. We do a lot for the fire department.
What year?
It's the service budget.
What year do you guys start paying responders for the fires?
What year did we? That was back in the fifties. Yeah, we have a record back to the, to the early fifties.
So for the levy?
Yes, sir, they were paying as much as a dollar a fire call.
That is probably good money back then.
Supplemented a lot of figures in that.
And then the, the building, the fire department, it's a city asset, correct?
All the assets are at the cities, they're all in, in the city's name. And that was mostly for. Insurance purposes to do that.
Yeah.
Unless there's an agreement that states. The city and the county can come up with an agreement if they wanted to. It's in funding to the gap.
Anyway, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, that. Did you have more time this day than John?
Well, for the, for the approval of that.
Okay. Okay. Well, twenty-four.
Yeah, is that soon enough for you for the next week? Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Ruth, do we have, let me see. Well, we got time to finish that.
Saw my speaker.
I saw you saying that.
Tom had asked that we put on here to establish a line item for. Uh, disasters, so it's coming up a lot.
I think we have to, and, and Kelly Brooks is here, and we, I'm talking before the meeting. That, you know, we're not receiving help from FEMA because despite the catastrophic damage here, we're not qualifying dollar amount wise for FEMA support. And then the state's fund, you know, the governor points to the legislature and legislature points to the governor, but the bottom line state counties, we're not getting anything. So we start budgeting for disaster. Because we've been able to fund some things out of the COVID money, but that has to be spent soon. After that, we need to be able to have a means to, to help people, so.
And I mentioned to Ruth, when I talked to her about this, to start with fifty thousand dollars, I wouldn't have a commissioner, commissioner spilled about it, but that's what I'm going to start with. I mean, I mean. Give me your thoughts.
I don't want to do more if possible.
I, I don't disagree, but there needs to be a, a line amount that says you can't spend the whole fifty in one shot.
And maybe categories.
Yeah.
Also.
It, it has to be broken down into some type of categories, and there has to be a limit. Without getting more approval.
Well, we would, the approval would come from here, any, for any expenditure of that funding, wouldn't it?
It should.
It should, yeah, but i- if there's an emergency, let's say something happens on a, on a Saturday and, and we're all maybe out.
You're eliminating the need for making basically an emergency saving agent, if you improve up to a certain amount, I guess, but you have to have categories, I think.
Yeah. So.
We always vote to do it and then work on how you want to set it up.
Would you give us some suggestions for the next meeting, maybe on?
Well, I won't, but somebody that knows about stuff like that. Well, yeah, I would want to know the. The structure, because I want to know who's approving that, I mean, we have spending authorities. And it almost sounds like we would be designated new spending authorities for sure.
Like you, I can create up to fifteen thousand now, but if it's more than something like that.
We have our mercy, yeah.
And we do that for the weekend. Maybe not a weekend.
Well, but let's say there's a disaster similar to the tornado touchdown, and we need a case of water, well, that's five hundred to a thousand bucks. Go ahead and let them spend that part. Without having to try to get approval, because it may be something that needs to be done quickly.
I think Ruth has it, but, well, she's not all spent.
I'm not. I'm her backup manager.
Yeah, it goes Ruth and Allison. Right now, I mean.
All right.
And, and it could go to me if they can't find.
Well, let's go ahead and just form the account, put some money in, then we'll figure it out for them.
Because we'll have to do a budget revision anyway to get it on those books.
So how much?
We're talking annually?
Annually.
Well, you'll have to revisit it every year anyway.
I think, I think we should do annually and then do a percentage, you can only do a percentage. But every year, it's just a percentage.
I don't see going over any more than twenty thousand.
What initially do you think we should put in?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think it should be more than that, I was, I wanted it higher than fifty.
I think it should at least be fifty. We want to form the account and then make a decision twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Okay. I make an approval to, to establish a line item for disasters, funding for disasters.
I think we can resolve this, I would have gone to seventy to a hundred, I mean, I, can we compromise at fifty?
Well, you know me, I'm cheap.
But cheap isn't always realistic, sorry, John.
I mean, just think about the value plus, we put, we put aside forty thousand for that.
Yeah.
And. And we may have to go higher than that depending.
All right, let's, I'll agree to fifty.
So for fifty thousand, second.
All favor.
Aye.
And then Tom asked for a letter to the Department of Highways, another road issue regarding hospital. Tom?
Yeah, the gentleman said he had a problem out there with the roads being bad, and I said, all the commission can do is put in a letter to the O H and say it's not getting fixed, request it being fixed.
Well, now thanks to Kelly Brooks, we have a phone number, too.
Oh, yeah. Tell them you gave us the number, tell them.
We have something to do each, probably more by time of the year, so that'll help. So do we have the letter already?
No, because all I know is it's high circle drive.
That's all I knew, it's high circle drive. Okay, I'll ask for more information, we can approve the letter and then I can get more information, right?
Yeah, I mean, we approved the letter.
Second, on favor.
And the next item is Allison's. Letter. So. I have drafted a letter to the Nicholas County Commission primarily, so we have talked to the Nicholas County Commission about having a regional airport in Somersville. And. We want to, we've talked to the airport board, I've gone to several of the meetings to support air tourism in the area. They have asked that the Fayette County Commission contribute thirty-five thousand a year for three years, after which they think it would be self-sustaining. In exchange for that, they have said that they will offer us. Three seats on the board, one for a commissioner and two of our appointees. And also to allow us to participate in the renaming of the airport and the committee to rename it. Um, so it would. More accurately reflect to the region. So I have done a letter to the commission, asking, telling them that, you know, assuming we prove it today, so based on if we prove it. That we're interested in doing that, and also invited them to present to us, because the commission in the town of Somersville have been running the airport. Um, if they need additional money like out of the ARPA funds, which we were desperate to spend. For the lighting and technology upgrades that were more immediately made the airport accessible, medevac and some other things that would bring them business for the refueling, that they should come to us. Um, I further added something to thank them for lending us resources.
Why don't you go ahead and read the letter out?
Well. Well, it just says what I just said.
I meant the first part.
For everybody to death, okay, well, the thank you paragraph says, we'd like to thank you for your generosity and lending our fire service resources. After tornado devastated the La Vista community near Lookout earlier this month, we value Nicholas County as a neighbor and want to continue working closely as we try to advance our citizens' mutual interests. That is it, the rest of it's about here. So I mean, we approve this letter and the thirty-five thousand dollars annually for three years.
So, I mean, it can.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred and five thousand dollars for three years, can we use ARPA funds, allocate the hundred and five thousand dollars out of our, of the funds as long as it's.
Long as they spend it.
Spent, well.
Obligated, I guess. About the same for the year.
Well, that's obligated, and then I have a meeting, their meeting is, was it tomorrow or today? No, it's tomorrow, I think.
Thanks.
So, um, yeah, so it's tomorrow at one o'clock, so with the word of the commission. Their board means, I think the commission is tomorrow, too, they usually move on things that we do. Um, but I'll talk to them and tell them, ask them if they can spend it, if we give it to them all at once.
Okay, so we can approve the letter, but not the funds.
I think we can approve the funds, we just pick us, after we get feedback from them on how we out, you know, whether we allocate it all at once, or whether we. You know, we could at least do the, the first thirty-five out of, or we out, or out of ARPA and then do the rest out of.
And then you have to, like, you have to have a caveat in there, because you can't obligate more than a year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but you'll, you know.
Okay, last second, on favor.
Aye. All right.
It's, it's nine thirty.
So.
Just rush. There it is. It's not.
I know last year, the, the state, a lot of this, or a lot of the commissions and money to, for the fire department to be used. And as an association, we've talked about it, and. These thermal cameras that we use now, they're. I think they were bought when Steve was fire coordinator, they're, they're timed out, we can't get them repaired, when something goes wrong with them, we gotta. We gotta scavenge old cameras to try to make the new camera work. Uh, batteries aren't lasting real long on them, I mean, and they're not cheap, they're pretty expensive. Uh, so. Departments has been going out, there's a couple of departments that's bought one, this is the new version. Uh, we was wanting to try to see if we could use that money, and put out the bid to, uh, get thirty-two of these cameras to first station, that'll go on the first and second, do entrants. You use them for search, uh, search in the house, but also for overhaul. Uh, so I mean, two really makes sense to have at each department. But they retail anywhere from forty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred apiece, but I've talked to some distributors and stuff, and if we, if we buy thirty. But I've talked to some distributors and stuff and if we, if we buy thirty-two, we can. For, knock a pretty big bin into that. And I know there's, I think it's like a hundred and seventy thousand or something like that in that, in the, for the two drafts of money we got from them. I mean, it should be enough to cover it and also we'd like to, uh, gas monitors, cause most stations only got one and they're. Third time doubt, just like these cameras, we can't get them calibrated. I mean, I would've brought one to show you, but we've only got one, so. We don't wanna take it out of station to bring up here. But they, they run roughly about three thousand a piece, but same thing, they, you know. We buy it in bulk of thirty-two, you get a substantial discount there, so. Plus, I'm going out FDIC end of this week. See what the new features and new stuff they got coming out with this and talk to some vendors and stuff, see if we can. You know, second deals and stuff like that, but if you want to see that, they're on the station, you wanna see what.
So you're just asking us for permission to bid it out?
Yeah, and we wanna bid it out, we wanna use the money, you know, from the, that the state allotted for the fire departments.
I think Chief Richardson briefed us on this equipment before. On things that you guys might need down the road, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with. Um, I move that we approve the request for bids.
Okay, and it's, I mean, is it fine with using that account that we signed instead of being the levy money, use that money, that's what.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we'll have to see what the bids come in.
Sure, sure, yeah.
There's enough money in the account, but, you know, I think we'll address that when we.
It should be close, I mean, by the way, it should be pretty close, I mean, right in that area.
Right now is about the bids and frankly, I mean, you can bid out anything without coming to us.
Gotcha.
Me bid it out first, you don't waste your time with this and then come in with the bids and then.
Well, yeah, that's what I said, we just doing, going out FDIC to see what they got anyway beforehand, so, I wanted it before we go there. Just wanted to make sure it was alright.
Well, it is alright and you don't need our.
Alright.
And Amy, this is for Dan, say. The annex, Ruth did. And, um, Ruth's gonna help me with this, cause she's been talking to Dan a little bit more than I have, but, um, after. Submitting the bids that we received for the judicial annex, um, roof replacement to Dan Sneed, who's our. Architect that we keep on hand, um, he did not agree with the proposals, um, based on the quote that we. Not the quote, but the, um, estimate that we originally got. Um, he doesn't think that we should be using a ballasted roof, is that correct? That's what he said.
He's got a whole list.
He has, yeah, and he's re, he has agreed to re, um, redraw up the RFP so we can redid it. Um, and then he will assist with managing and, um.
And you.
Come to the pre-bid and, yeah, it's CFIA, yeah.
And he also said, like, they weren't replacing the insulation.
There were some issues with the insulation, yeah, because it's, especially if it's been leaking, yeah. The insulation's gonna need to be replaced and that wasn't part of it, so.
There was such a difference in the biz, cause, I mean, there was a.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, so he agreed to redo it and put it out to bid and set in all the meetings and stuff, which I think he used to do and I really think.
I would rather him start doing that.
Thank you, yes.
But he also built that building across the street too, so.
And he's very surprised that it's the original roof.
So we need to approve this because.
And I need it for a CFIA grant.
My motion to.
Second.
All favor. Number ten. Yeah, he's here.
Yeah, please.
Don't be that way. Everybody's looking at me. I got a piece of paper you sent.
Well, I, I, well, I learned that, like I said, out of the twenty projects that got submitted for the REAP program, nineteen was approved and mine wasn't. There was, it was forty thousand dollars to tear out the truck from the trailer park, uh, that y'all, you know, was asking for assistance with that. Um, after the project, there was eleven thousand and some dollars left over.
Sure, yeah, we have some other contracts to work on, but as of the biz.
Right, and it, so that's kind of what I've come to propose, that is, if there's any money left in the REAP program at the end of the nineteen projects. If that money can be allocated, used to help tear some of these trailers out, maybe up on the, you know, the Gatewood side, down towards. Bottom and then I'll work with the, uh, people there, make, try to, you know, use, try to match some of the funds that's used on my end. And try to help with it, so.
Yeah, you wrote in here that you'd match it.
Do you own all those trailers or do they?
No, the trailers were left with the park.
Or abandoned.
Yes, they're abandoned. None of them belong to the, to me, some of them was in, well, they're in the trailer park. They've been passed down, like, a lot of the people that left there had bills of sales, there's titles. Some of them still to the eighteen, nineteen land company, but there's, uh, nobody, I don't even know if anybody's paying taxes on anything out there. So I'm trying to get them out there where I can actually, and I'll take responsibility on whatever end that is. Because, like I said, I just want them out so I can, you know, start.
Somewhere else. We had another mobile home park that we were gonna spend some funds and. The property owner did not legally own the mobile home, so we can't, she doesn't have the right to tell us, okay, I'll just ask him legally. And.
They don't belong, I mean, who do they belong to?
You, you uncovered that in your contract?
I've, I've owned it for four months.
The person who owned it before, did you inherit any of them? That, that's what we're.
There shouldn't be something, there shouldn't be some legal document somewhere, right?
I've actually went back and tried to run some of the bins on some of the trailers, they don't come back anyway.
Well, I feel like, I, I feel like we need to do a little more diligence in making sure, because what. What can happen is if we use, like, tear it down, that liability for us and for you.
Those trailers, I've got the property owner, the, the land manager that was out there, the property manager. Those trailer, even if someone would ever come back and say, on my end, and say, hey. They've been empty for years, they would owe me so much money, on, you know, the, the, the company itself. There's just, there's no way they would be able to purchase them. I mean, you're talking two hundred dollars a month the last tw- you know, some of them six years that they've been empty. I mean, how would anyone ever?
That's what I'm saying.
But there's gotta be, there's a legal process.
I mean, you're the lawyer.
We've been working through this because. We have to make sure that everybody with an interest to the property signs off on it in case something happens and regarding. Their authority for us to intervene. This presents an interesting issue because. And we walk into this with another area, I mean, honestly, legally what should happen is, is it should be governed by the contract, lease agreement. They're leasing a lot and so there should be an agreed upon what happens. If not, then it's a determination of. You know, a, you know, mobile homes, it's mine saying, and I'll look into it, I know we haven't looked into it, but if they're on property that's not the owner. They're not a situate, they're not a fish, correct, they're not a home, it's being approved. And so in some sort of sense, if they're actually considered personal property, so then you're talking about a different kind of. Legal recourse to remove personal property, they have abandoned vehicles and that of, of somebody's property, so it's, it becomes. Something that we got to, um, make sure our, our piece of frost will be into that.
Well, legally, the, the law states, those trailers are left from the property, more than ninety days, they become property of the park.
Right, and but you, but then you've gotta, you've gotta file, you've got to perfect the title and you've gotta claim, you see what I'm saying, and you would, if you would pursue that act. Then you could then sign as an interest of that mobile home to us for us to be able to do that. See what I'm saying? It's like perfecting the title. If, if they have abandoned it and you go through the proceedings, say, okay, that property's abandoned, it's abandoned on my property. Then you have the property, then you could sign off and we can, we can.
When I took it over, there was no, cause I actually asked the property owner, the guy that owned it before me. For any leases on each of the truck, and he said he didn't, didn't carry any leases on any.
That's what we're walking in.
Well, no, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I don't think Mr. Hilton, Hilton understands it.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, but the problem with it is, is there's no lease in place. I can't legally find out who, who was the last person that ever hung, cause they've been empty for so long, so it's just there.
Right, and I think at that point, you're gonna have to look at just advertising, going through the legal advertisements, the band property of the thing.
Better to ask for forgiveness.
From our standpoint, assume, we will not assume liability, so I understand what you're talking about.
What I'm saying is I'll call up whatever, take, assume all that liability.
I was getting ready to ask, that's what I was getting ready to ask, is there any way that he could do that? And accept responsibility, even if there's a lawsuit later on, that he accepts responsibility.
One hundred percent.
One hundred percent of the rest of responsibility and keeps the county out of it.
Because that's what, that was my question whenever we came up, does all the properties that's been or now. How, as a property owner, is taking all responsibility in that?
I mean, I, that's, that was my suggestion, let him, let him have the responsibility.
How, it's, does it work that way?
Well, the, I mean, how I think in the law and how I try to explain it, if you, if you authorize me to tear down. His house, and you say, but I accept full responsibility, if I'm still an act, if I'm an actor, I cannot rely upon that, it doesn't.
What about the property? Can property be attached to the lot, to the, I'm coming up with stuff just randomly. Try to help Mr. Hilton and the county out. Can the property, can he attach, let the county attach the property? And accept responsibility and the county attach the property, if property were collateral to do that. So, I mentioned something probably never been asked.
Yeah, so, so you basically, it would, it would operate so, so much like a, a lien on the property in the event that something would. Would happen, then the property would cover any type of, uh, law to the expenditure, the rest of it. I still see a lot of complicating this. My, my, my recommendation is for you to do, we would do in other properties, which is to try to clean the title. Clean the title of trailer, property, whatever, and you can do that, there are mechanisms in the law to do that.
Most of, I mean, a lot of them I can't even find.
I got, I got, no, what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'm talking about notice, just putting notice out that this property is, that it's, if it's not claimed. Or that, and you, you.
Did you run that in the paper?
Yeah, on the paper.
It's, and do all of them at the same time.
All of them.
Yeah, list all of them at the same time.
And, and then if no one comes and claims or removes them, then, then you, that operates to clean the title. And then, I mean, think about a quick claim, that's like a, a quick claim, depending on title or whatnot to, to clean it. So then you can come and you can sign on behalf of all these people. And that, and that way, it protects you, it protects us, now you're less protected than us, but you went through the process in order to clean it. And no one, does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll work on it to make sure I'm doing exactly how you're gonna want it done.
Yeah. Mission, you reach out, you send me what you got and I don't mind giving advice and, and.
That's all I'm asking for, is any help I can get with it.
Because we, I'm sure you guys want me to look at what you did just to make sure of my ability, so that way I, I could help you as you're now being in the process with the.
And then I think usually, how long does that process take? I'm just, an idea, if he, if he listed them tomorrow in the paper, or. Monday in the paper.
Yeah, it's usually somewhere between thirty, forty-five days of notice and, and a class two advertisement, so it's not too long, it's not too. But then you're gonna have to follow the legal mechanism to just clean it. It's just, it's basically presenting it to, um. And it depends on the value of the property, but just basically presenting it to the court, says, hey, I, I, I submitted this out there, no one came forward. And it's now abandoned my property, um, and then once you get that, then that's what you'll submit to us. Because then, not only, not only do you improve ownership in the law, you can prove ownership that no one abandoned these properties.
Okay, that's something I can follow up on. I just wanted, my, my goal was there just to get it cleaned up.
Well, and I, I would wanna see the agreement that, that you're willing to clean up the rest of them. Look, I don't want us to put the eleven thousand and get only eleven thousand dollars worth of buildings destroyed, cause that's the reason we're investing in it, is to get it cleaned up.
I think you said you would match the eleven thousand, I believe in this letter. I think you would match it fifty.
Yeah, or whatever, yeah, up to whatever I can, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I know it'll be over the eleven, but if there's more money and I can match more, I would be. So, I just, like I said, I just, I didn't know if I could do all of it at one time.
So, Wes, will you suggest making a decision on just that he does that?
Yeah, I would, thank you. A- and as, as everyone here that knows me, we anticipate, I, I saw, I read, so the day that they, I think it was Marsha County. They provided more funds in the lap of the problem. And as they're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be countering this for this present, uh. Of permits, a good opportunity to address this, so we're working through this and other issues as well, so.
And I also need to check with Shippo whether I have to do one oh six reviews on just the land or on each individual trailer, cause if there are no deeds or anything to show. Ownership, I don't know how.
Once he retains ownership, that fixes that.
Well, I still have to go back and show, like, there's a whole process that I have to go back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I can call somebody, let me know.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Ruth or hold on.
Shell, right?
Shell, yeah, shell.
So I, I don't have anyone.
I was afraid of that.
Do we have any Democrats in the room who are willing to serve as an emergency absentee ballot commissioner? For the election, that just means if there's somebody who's incapacitated in the hospital, that you go with the Republican emergency ballot. Will you do it? Okay, so now we have one.
Great. Emergency absentee ballot commissioner.
So I move that we approve Angela Gerald as the Democratic Emergency Exempt Ballot Commissioner in the absence of any other volunteers throughout the whole Democratic Party. Also, while we have all the firefighters in the room, we need a firefighter on our beautification committee, so if anybody. Volunteering for that, um, please put the word out, cause we do need somebody.
I think, yeah, you are.
So is it the LRA that we need?
No, we don't.
Alright, then everybody, thank you for your service.
That, that, that's it, isn't it?
That's it, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.